I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. I'll see if you can get that. All right, are we better now?
That was me, I got. I wasn't, but I am now.
All right, I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Jamison.
Hall?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended.
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to other business. First is a resolution that a letter of support to the Blackhawk County Gaming Association, the funding request by the Waterhawks Eagle Lake Expansion Project be approved and direct the Chair to sign for the same.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done. This resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Jamison.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. All right, next we'll move on to the Budget Work Session. This is discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '25 Blackhawk County budget.
Good morning, everyone. I think Amanda's going to kick us off this morning.
Morning, Board. Amanda Fezimer, HR Director, so here to talk a little bit about-
We've still got feedback. It's kind of coming from in here. We'll just get the audio figured out here momentarily. All right, we'll just try to forge forward here. All right, go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. So here- Salary increases for Blackhawk County, so this, of course, includes our non-bargaining staff, which would be professional management-level supervisory up to directors. And then we also have a discussion about elected officials and their percentage deputies based on the Compensation Board recommendations. So you all received this memo from me yesterday outlining the recommendations. So I can talk through, you know, as much as or as little as you'd like here, but typically our non-bargaining has always followed with, in suit with our union wages. As you saw, the union tentative agreements, there is a range of across the boards. So there's from four and a half to four to three and a half to three. So historically, that's all been the same across the unions and non-bargaining just follows that. This year, though, I think we'll be doing something more like an average of those unions since we do have non-bargaining roles in each of the departments and offices that oversee the union work. So this initial recommendation is 4%. That is what Michelle has included. And again, that is for non-director roles excluding the VA director. So any director above like a GS 26 would be a 4% across-the-board increase. There were some market adjustments based on the compensation study. We were able to model those similarly to how the union adjustments were done, as in costing those kind of over multiple years or at least kind of capping how far we would go with those market recommendations, so. And then the non-bargaining directors, why, we arrived at 3%. We've been able to make pretty good headway with directors. If you recall, last year, we adjusted about four of them. And we've also brought on new directors where we've upped the salary range that was needed, such as IT and finance, as well as like public health. So I feel like those are in a pretty good position, that they don't need to necessarily match the rest of non-bargaining. So if we were to, again, those are the numbers that Michelle and I have put in for the budgetary spreadsheets, right? But if you were to go and reduce that, I would look at probably just not going any lower than 3.5% for non-bargaining and then, again, those for being a director at GS 26 or above, a 2.5.
So you're recommending 4%?
For, yes, for anybody that's not a director or at a GS 26 and above.
Does that include, I was thinking, wasn't listening very well.
That's okay.
Does that include, is your recommendation 4% for all elected officials?
Nope. So I don't actually make that recommendation, but I will give you some input in the discussion we had with the Compensation Board and how they arrived at. So that's the next section here on this memo. You see elected officials and percentage deputies. Just a reminder, so not all of our elected offices have percentage deputies. Those are management positions that either could be non-bargaining or they could be this percentage deputy under Iowa code where they are tied directly to the salary of the elected official. So the comp board came, they met in December, and they did entertain the compensation and classification study data. And we kind of did a combination of, we usually always looked at ISAC, which is like, they have a salary survey, Iowa State Association of Counties. And we typically looked at the top 10 counties excluding Polk. So we never really compare ourselves to Polk County. We're just, you know, a bit larger. So we used a combination, that's what you'll see. I guess I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but one of the attachments I sent you, this was actually given to the Compensation Board. And this is a comparison of if we were looking at just ISAC salary survey data or the Gallagher study data, how these roles kind of compared. And we basically kind of met in the middle. You know, you can see that under ISAC salary survey, all of these positions are fairly behind. Or I would say not behind, but they're at least, you know, most of them 10% behind the market average. Or sorry, the market median there. We do use median sometimes instead of average because there's, can be a lot of fluctuations from county to county. For example, Board of Supervisors, some Board of Supervisors make six figures, some make 40,000. So we had to try and account for some of those to not skew the data too much, which an average would clearly skew that. But then you look at the Gallagher study and some of this demonstrated that, you know, these positions and other management positions in private sector, you know, primarily, or it could be other counties, which, again, our Gallagher study included smaller communities, so keep that in mind, smaller counties. But it also included large counties like Lynn County, Johnson, Scott County, Story County. So we kind of met in the middle with the recommendation. It's how we arrived at 3%, well, how we arrived at 10% for the auditor, attorney, recorder, treasurer, and 12% for the sheriff. And then 3%, that's kind of been the standard for the Board of Supervisors here. I don't know that we've actually gone above 3%, but it's a, there's room to go, you know, more than 3%, but that was what the comp board felt was doable.
They kind of have a history typically of gauging us, I think, by making a recommendation and expecting us to reduce it or cut it in half. That's been unfortunate, but I thought that's kind of been what they've done over the years instead of looking more. So I appreciate that you went to the effort to put this information together for them, to give them things that they, and they looked at it, so that's great.
Yeah, and we're not unique to that. We've seen that's happened in other communities where, I mean, the board, you know, determining whether they're going to cut their own or not. I don't think that's been an issue for you guys, for our board. You tend to make the decision based on what you have in front of you and and other factors in order to determine what's best. But with elected officials, you know, I would consider, I'm not necessarily giving a recommendation, but most of our wage study changes have been, you know, anywhere in the range of 5% to 8%. So if you were to reduce that, I wouldn't go beyond half. You could look at reducing it by, you know, 75% of the recommendation or to 75% or half. And this was a group that did get zero last year as well, the elected officials and the percentage deputies.
I'd like to-
Amanda.
Go ahead, Tom.
Amanda, when you were talking about various supervisors, you said there's some six figures. There's also a lot of counties that don't have five to have three.
Right.
And I think, is Lynn County one of them? That's the reason why they make more because there's only three supervisors compared to five?
Yeah, I think a few years ago, the public petitioned to have, they had five supervisors, maybe near six figures. And Lynn County is one that-
They were at six figures before they went down to three.
There you go, yeah. And they're definitely more progressive on pay. They tend to lead the market. But yeah, you know, there's still important roles being board members, too.
Oh, yeah. I agree. My feeling is really to be, honestly, is I've never been a fan, both when I was on the city council or on the Board of Supervisors, of comparing to other government entities. I try to concentrate on, this is Blackhawk County, we know what we can afford. I've already heard discussion that we potentially may be taking out of the reserves. We may potentially barline money by bonding. But yet, we want to give 10%, 12% increases and reclassification, large increases. So I think that we can control the cost here on Blackhawk County if we just want to do it rather than just arbitrarily giving raises out and then going into debt. I would suggest 3% for the supervisors, 4% for the rest, and 3% for non-bargaining and non-bargaining directors, is what I would recommend.
Sorry, what was that again, Tom, for the non-bargaining and the?
I would go for the non-bargaining 3%, both categories. I would go 3% for the supervisors, 4% for the rest. I do know there's language out there for the sheriff. There's been, I think, two years in a row, we didn't meet that language. I don't know what the consequences are if you don't. But 12%, that's a lot of money. And that's 12% on the large increase we gave last year.
I think that we're only allowed to decrease them by the same percentage point, though. Is that correct, Amanda?
I believe so. I think Mike Trining can maybe help speak to that, but there is language on Iowa code that if you reduce the recommendation, it has to be, I believe, by the same.
And that's for all elected officials? That's separate from?
Right.
Yeah, there might be something the board could maybe do something different with their own.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
The, if you're going to change the percentage for elected officials, it has to be reduction. It can't be an increase, that's the first thing. Secondly, it has to be the same percentage reduction across the board with only one potential exception, and that is for the Board of Supervisors. You can reduce your own by more than you reduce the others by. You can't reduce your own by less than the others are reduced by, but you can reduce your own by more than they are.
Okay.
So if we did, so that's why I said like 75% of the recommendation or 50%, just easy because it's, you know, you'd be looking at, actually, Michelle, can you pull that back up? So that would be-
It's up there.
Oh.
Oh, that's weird. Yeah, that, it shows.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is your spreadsheet. I'm sorry. Okay, so she's, sorry. I was looking for my spreadsheet. Okay, so Michelle put this together here, so you can see if you accepted 50% of the recommendation, what that would do to those recommendations. If you accepted 75% of it, you know, that's where those would fall as well. So, yeah. And Tom, can you just clarify, I heard 3% for non-bargaining and you just meant 3% for all? That would be directors included or?
Yeah, exactly. You know, that law has changed every year and there even, last year, I'm not sure if it's even in discussion this year, but they're talking about eliminating the Compensation Board. But I know the rules have changed yearly on that. And it's really quite confusing. I'm not for sure what it is this year, to be honest with you.
Okay. And I still think with the directors that they can go below the other non-bargaining, so I, Tom, maybe kind of just, my own feedback would be if you did 3.5 for non-bargaining and 2.5 for directors, because those are now, and we can show the other spreadsheet of the directors, Michelle, if you don't mind.
I know for years, the board is, I know different times, supervisors have gone zero for the Board of Supervisors and zero for non-bargaining. I know that wasn't right on the non-bargaining, but we have gone zero in the past.
Yep, and I, I'd like to obviously avoid that because the bulk of our wage increases are union. They're not non-bargaining. I mean, that's just the reality, almost, I mean, the vast majority of our jobs here are union. You have a handful of managers and professional roles that are excluded from the union. And we'd like to keep them as consistent as we can, but that's why I said directors, you know, when you look at a percentage and it's over 100,000 for a salary, that does, that's, that can become a big number, even at a small percentage, as compared to a non-bargaining role that's making $50,000. So it's trying to be selective with the data that we were given through the comp study to determine. And to, and I think, you know, most people at the union table understood why certain ones were moving a certain way and others were not. Non-bargaining and directors are no different, and elected officials I look at as the same. But here's this information. I've been looking at, you know, trends across these types of roles, which, you know, all of these we do, you know, we've recruited for several of these over the past couple of years. We've had to replace our ones that are appointed by the board or an autonomous board. And so I do like these to be fairly competitive. There was a time where this looked a lot worse, where majority of our leadership roles were in that red, like 10% below the market with, you know, quite a bit of years of experience in their position. But we've come a long ways. I feel like the recommendations that are in there now assume a 3% across the board. And even if you do a 2.5, it's not going to move this needle a whole lot. We're still going to look pretty good going into fiscal year '25 for those leadership roles.
Amanda, how many directors do we have?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So ones, I would say nine-ish.
Okay.
Because consolidated communications, I consider a director, but it's, it's a little, you know, you have, that's under a different 2080 agreement. It's a little different. So eight definite directors. VA, the Responsive VA Commission, public health, obviously border health, conservation, Conservation Board, the ones that report to the Board of Supervisors, HR, IT, engineer, facilities, and finance.
The, the new directors, let's just say IT. When we brought, bring in the new ones, like we did with Al, didn't we increase that salary and classification compared to the old IT director?
Right, so I-
So essentially, they're starting out higher than what the position was with the person that left it.
Right, and I'd like to get away from that. I'd like to, when someone leaves, you replace them with a lower wage because the data in the range is more competitive. And I think we have accomplished that in the last couple of years. So, because that is, that number feels great. I mean, I make more than Debbie did in a very short period of time. And in some ways, those roles could have been adjusted back then. But, because they were, they were really misaligned, some of those. But I think we're in a good position here. Like I said, you could do a 2.5 for directors, that would be fine. I mean, you could, you guys can do, you know, we can look at other scenarios, too. But I'd like to keep the other non-bargaining about 3.5, just the trends and the ways that the unions have moved as well, so.
Yeah, I'm listening to Tom's comments, but I guess I was thinking, yeah, the non-bargaining, they don't have the step increases and some of those things that the bargaining people do have.
So they have, we do have merit increases, but it's not as, overall, the union step increases are about 4% for each step roughly. Some are a little bit less, but they're longer. Non-bargaining, the most you get is a 3% if you're hired in the very first quartile of your pay range. Otherwise, it's 2% and then 1% after midpoint, so. And, and we did make some adjustments and, you know, what we did with that, we followed our policy, which says that if a position has been reevaluated, such as under the Compensation and Classification Study, and upgraded one or two or however many classifications, they would get a 5% increase. I did not put the across-the-board on top of that. That's kind of been how we've traditionally done it. They still get their merit. So someone who is maybe looking at only in the past have gotten 3% across, or 3% raise because they've been topped out or a 4% raise, now they would be looking at getting like an 8% this year or a 7%. But that's very, it's selective. It's not all non-bargaining or, you know, it's limited. And similar to how we did that with the unions, so.
I have, I have a recommendation, 4% for non-bargaining, 3% for non-bargaining directors, 1.5% for supervisors, 6% for the sheriff, and 5% for elected officials.
Which is reducing 50%?
Yes.
I was just going to say, I knew we could do that.
And one thing I do, you know, I think, just to kind of talk a little bit like what Tom was saying about people starting in higher, I think we have an opportunity now that we've had a consultant come in and evaluate our structures and evaluate our kind of processes. I would like us to look at our policy with the flexibility that we can start non-bargaining new hires. Right now, they can start up to midpoint, which has been helpful, but also in some ways is allowed roles to come in higher than what maybe they should have. And of course, we had a lot of, over the last couple of years, there was a lot of turnover, retention and recruitment purposes, but I think we've learned some things throughout, you know, our experience and even the department heads as to where maybe it, even when you offered at midpoint, the person still left within a year or two. And, and that's where those inequities can occur. So in my understanding now, a bit more with midpoint and learning out of this whole study that we did, consultant says, you know, that's really where you reserve that for someone who can come in and hit the ground running. Very little training needed. And so I think we just need to be a little more conscientious of that. And I'll be working closely, more closely with the department heads and elected officials who hire for non-bargaining to kind of, you know, determine if it's really necessary to go up to midpoint. Because I'd like people to grow, you know, within their roles and, and within the organization. And we allow for that by having those merit steps to do so. Because once you get to midpoint, it's 1% for a merit, and it's not much.
Well, I'm definitely with Dan on the non-bargaining and the non-bargaining directors. I'm still thinking about the rest myself.
I was going to say, I could second it and then we have discussion, but I don't know if we, do we have a discussion? Yeah, do you want to think about it?
No, no, we can, I think we should have a discussion.
I'll second the motion then.
Was that a motion, Dan? Okay.
And it was, just to clarify, it was 4, 3, 1.5, 5%, and then 6%?
Yes.
I'm certainly in agreement on the non, the, on the, on the non-bargaining side. You know, we went at 0% for electives last year. I have concerns about compression, especially after the comp study, where we're, feel like we're probably getting pretty close. And it feels like comp board did some homework. This time, it wasn't just sort of a gut check and throw out some numbers in a half an hour conversation and send it on its way, so. I feel a little more comfortable with their recommendations, especially considering last year's zero across the board. Yeah, that's sort of where I'm at. I'm good on the non-bargaining. I'm in agreement with the four and the three. I tend to honor the work, I guess, of the comp board and go with their recommendation.
I'd say that's where I'm at, too.
And for the reasons you're mentioning, though, too, I think with the comp study and where we see ourselves positioned, I think, understanding that we did kind of go with zero last time, but I thought with the, with where we're coming in and the positions that we have, and I, and I think and appreciate the information that you've provided, for that reason, I'm all right still with the motion. I guess I'd support still that for the same reasons, kind of what you're saying, but.
All right, Tom?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I wish we could give raises out. I think the sheriff wasn't 0%, was he last year?
Everybody was zero.
Yeah, we did everyone.
But I will say the sheriff got 15% and the command staff got 15% the year prior, I believe. And, you know, so that's where some of this information, as we get it, I think, you know, these are all good recommendations. It's just looking forward, you know, like that 15% could have split, been split over two years, for example.
Yeah.
And, and I believe the attorney got seven and a half, but impression is a thing that we want to be mindful of. And, you know, we did, with one of the unions, our attorneys, we said that they would not make more than 82%. Their scale could not go more than 82% of the county attorney. And there's not a whole lot of spread there. And to honor that contract, you know, we definitely have to be mindful of that each year and to be looking at that. We should be fine for this year. And 50% or even 75%, obviously 100% would make it the best. But, but yeah, everybody did get zero last year of the elected officials and their percentage deputies.
I appreciate everything what the board members are saying, and I understand where they're coming from. It's just what I struggle with, the current condition of the budget. Increases just add on to the debt that we're going to have to try to cover, so. I'm sorry, I can't support it, but I understand where each one of you are coming from.
Dan, would you be open to an amendment to take it to 75?
Yes.
And I would support that as well.
And I appreciate your comments, though, Amanda, looking at that in the future and using that and the fact that we have the comp board that's paying attention to the information and considering that, yeah, that's, I like that, too, so, looking at that in the future.
It sounds like we've got a compromise on the table of 4% and 3% and then reducing the comp board recommendations to 75% of their recommendation.
What would that be for the sheriff, attorney, and treasurer?
Michelle, can you pull up that spreadsheet you did? Yep, we'll have it up here in just a moment, Tom.
As I find the right one.
Have an increased sheriff to $149,434. County attorney to $162,500. And, let's see, the auditor, recorder, and treasurer, puts them close to $99,000.
What's that come out of percent, Dan?
So that'd be?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half for everybody except the sheriff. Puts him at nine. Supervisors at 2.25.
And are, you know, with the sheriff, with the deputies and, and the public safety in general, they were of the ones that had a little bit higher. They had the 4% across the board for the next three years. And then they also had a step added on the end. So that would be about, I mean, we're not too far off at that 75% recommendation.
Is there, is there any interest? I know in the past, we've discussed wages after the regular budget. Is there any interest in delaying this till we go through the complete budget and where we're going to end up at?
We can, and I know we could also, we can take action and then also take, if something were to happen, after we look at the budget at the end, we can still make changes up until the last minute where we certify, correct?
Theoretically, yes, as long as I have time to run the numbers, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah.
But us taking action today, at least, that's a direction.
Adds that information.
That would help us, we, I haven't gone back to the non-barg, like, the one group I haven't been able to talk to much about the comp study and everything and that I've been questioned about are those that aren't in the union. So it would at least give me, because I don't think we're going to go, we're not going to do zero for non-bargaining or double non-bargaining. It would at least give me kind of a direction to where I can explain how some of that, where people will land starting fiscal year '25. So that, that would be appreciated. But yeah, it's not final till the hearing.
I know, I'm comfortable taking this step today just so we can have further solidify the direction that the budget's heading.
Would that be all right, Tom? We just, we put it in for now, so we've got numbers in there and see what it looks like, and then you can propose it, I guess, if you want to later.
I'm really cautious. It's never going to come back again once it's voted on today.
Yeah, I know.
But that, that's fine. I mean, if you guys want to go ahead and support it today- I mean, if you guys want to go ahead and support it today, that's fine. I'm just, I'm really struggling with this budget. I'm struggling with bonding and I'm struggling with taking more money out of the reserves.
I am too.
There's an easy way of settling this budget and that's cutting it. And if you cut it, you won't be bonding and you won't be taken out of the reserves. I mean, sometimes you have to make these sacrifices because you can't do it all. We can't have huge pay increases, reclassification increases and then honor everything in the budgets, because I don't think we've cut anything out of capital or budgets. So, I, I don't know, that's just my opinion and again, I respect each one of you up there for your opinion, but that's why we have five different personalities on the board.
And we're at a time too where some of this we can, you know, look, I mean, most of your savings from what Michelle and I have been looking at and even discussions with the board members is, it's, it's not usually, I mean, yes, wage increases obviously drive increases to budget and things like that, but, you know, we still operate with quite a few vacancies across the different departments and we have some fairly persistent vacancies that we may have to look at more closely in the future, definitely. And the ones that work, you know, where they're year after year after year, it's the same job classification open. And, and those are things where you are able to kind of hedge some, I guess, not take a total gamble, but really think about, is that going to be filled? And, and if it's not gonna be filled year after year, do we need to think about looking at what it should be and how it should be operating within that department? But, you know, and we still have flexibility even after these wages to kind of look at across the departments, you know, what's more efficient. I've had some elected officials and department heads come to me after people have retired and they said, you know, Amanda, I've got a whole new staff. Not many of them have the five weeks off like the more senior staff did who retired and I'm realizing maybe I don't need that office specialist this year or for the immediate future. So, you know, those are all things that kind of fluctuate year to year, especially as we have a generation of staff members likely retiring in the next immediate to, you know, five, seven years ahead of us. So, that will be, I think, an important factor going forward that will kind of affect that fund balance as to whether it grows or, or does not or things like that.
I don't want to cut off any discussion or debate, but I think, I think everybody's ready to move forward.
Can I get a, kind of a point of order?
Yes.
Dan made a motion and Linda seconded it.
Yes, yep.
Tavis made, I just, Hall made a recommend, asked about an amendment.
Yes.
Do you amend your motion and you seconded the amendment so we don't have to vote on an amendment? Is that what happened?
I mean, it, whichever was easiest for you.
If, if Supervisor Hall made an amendment and somebody seconded it that, we would need to vote on that and then go back to the original.
No, I just asked to try to make sure. I changed my motion.
Okay, and you seconded?
Yes.
And it's changed, okay.
All right. All right, so the motion as it stands is, is a 4% for non bargaining, 3% for non bargaining directors, GS 26 and above, and then what were the percentages would be 2.25%. I'm sorry, can you?
Or the supervisors.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And then 9% for the sheriff and 7.5% for the other elected officials.
All right. Everybody clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll do this as a resolution. Roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Chelka?
Yeah.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution was adopted.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Amanda.
Okay. I don't have a lot else to discuss today, but I did, I did have.
How are you? Oh, good.
Okay, I did have some, I don't know who that is, I did have some questions about how, really it's about how the $3.50 cap works, so I put together a little bit of information to hopefully explain to everybody why we have to do what we have to do. So, under Iowa code's law tells you what you can have tax levies for and there are four basic ones for counties, but the primary one is what's called the general basic levy and that has a cap of $3.50 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. So when I'm talking about the 3.50 cap, that is what the most the state thinks we should tax for, and that's eligible for almost anything we do. That's how you pay for almost all your, well, all your general fund salaries, utilities, fuel, the lights, anything you can think of, that's, that's the levy we can use to pay that. So as I, as we build a budget, you fill up that bucket and I, Gabby, we have to thank her for this wonderful graphic art she provided for me at the very last minute yesterday. But, so we fill up that blue bucket with all of our expenses, all the things we've been talking about, till we get to that cap at the $3.50. When it starts to overflow, or in other words, our expenses are too high to all fit in that bucket, we're allowed to take some of that overflow and put it in a different bucket, which generally, or the main one is called the general supplemental levy. That one does not have a dollar cap, but you can only charge certain types of expenses to it. Elections is one and there's several others. The one that most counties will use to fill in that 3.50 gap is employee benefits. So, the portion that we, as we hire an employee, obviously there's a section for social security tax, IFRS, health insurance, those kind of things. We have a choice, we can pay for that out of the 3.50 or we can move those employee benefits over to that general supplemental levy. So that, that's what we've, you've been doing for several years and I have, I think I'm just gonna show the chart. I have, I also gave you a lot of numbers, but I, I think maybe the pictures are enough to see what's going on. Oh shoot, and it split into two pages, that's frustrating. You can, what, what I wanted to show you with this chart is if you look at the blue bars, that's how much employee benefits we were paying for under that $3.50 cap. And that varies every year depending what all our other expenses are and what property valuations are. But the, the interesting thing I think to point out on here is starting in fiscal year 20, you can see how the amount being paid by the general fund drops significantly. So, by the year of '23, we were virtually paying for almost no employee benefits from the 3.50 and we, we were putting them all in the general supplemental bucket. And I'm gonna go add on 24 here. And 24, we made some different decisions last year with budgeting that allowed us not to have to use 100% under the general fund, so we didn't quite have to push as much over to the employee benefits levy. Unfortunately, for this year, with what we've looked at so far, oops, that's not really what I meant to do, just wanted to go back. All of our, actually I should go back to that bucket. Our 3.50 bucket is overflowing more than the total amount of the employee benefits for those general fund employees. So, now, for the first time in a while at least, I don't know if you've ever been there before, but in, certainly in the last several years, our salaries, software, fuel, utilities, everything else we buy is more than that blue bucket can pay for. So, I've moved, I believe, everything I can over to the general supplemental bucket and we still have that gap, though 1.6 million was in the, the option with the new positions and the increased funding for the community agencies. So, that, this is a different problem probably than you've had in several years at least, because we, we simply don't have the ability under the law to tax for everything we'd like to have that comes out of that blue bucket. So we, you're, you only, then are left with only two choices. You either reduce what's in the blue bucket by cutting or you have to use reserves for operating, which I think is a, it's a terrible slippery slope to start down, particularly at the tune of 1.6 million, because, and they won't, if we just assume that everything's gonna stay the same for '26, we already know we're going, we've already got contractual pay increases that are gonna increase that gap and there'll be a lot of other things that change it. But, it's likely this problem continues unless and until there is significant taxable valuation increases, which is very difficult to come by. So, that's why the issue we're having this year is probably a little different than what you've experienced before. And that was the, that's the primary message, I guess, I wanted to share today.
We have several options though, as far as when you say it's reduce or use reserves, we can reduce various amounts.
Combination, absolutely, anything, yes. And as we looked at Tuesday, you know, I put a few suggestions out there of things you might want to change. There's more that we're thinking about. You might want to ask your department heads and elected officials to come up with some recommended savings in each of their departments, for example, which you would not have to then adopt all of them, it just gives you topics to discuss and think about, so you can prioritize what you do want to fund.
I thought you had some pretty good suggestions.
I didn't.
Just a start.
Just a comment.
Good start, you're right, yeah, that was a good start.
Michelle, if you, Amanda spoke about, you know, there's a handful of positions that have been unfilled for a while. That is what the payroll adjustment currently, is that, in that payroll, that million dollar, that's, that's effectively where those are, so.
We're trying to guess at what our savings would be from vacant positions and certainly a piece of that is made up, and particularly as departments get larger, you, you tend to have more turnover. It tends to be more difficult to keep all positions filled all the time. So our, a couple of our larger departments have some and, and as I think, we all know what the environment has been like for law enforcement since 2020, it's, it's been difficult to replace all of those positions all the time.
We could possibly reduce out some of those vacancies, could we not, be a savings? Because we taxed typically for those in previous years and we don't fill them and, and just as an example, I was gonna say Brian got up the other day and told us he'd had an opening for three years. Well, I mean, yes, oh, go ahead, please.
So I think, so that's what I've, looking ahead, I think, coming back to departments and, and saying, you know, and again, like I've had another department who, you know, said, they kind of saw this, they said, you know, it's not laying off anybody, it's just the idea that we may not backfill this role because our workforce has changed. It's newer hires, people with not as long of longevity, so they don't have, you know, again, all the time off accumulated and using it. And so, and then for the other departments, like, you know, assistant county attorneys, it is hard to recruit for highly skilled roles and other ones, public health nurse. And then you also have, you know, we've always had dispatch openings, detention officer openings and deputy openings. And so I think coming back to your departments and at least getting them thinking about, you know, our engineer's office recognized that it's very hard to recruit for engineering tech technicians and that's across a lot of communities, where I've heard of openings being for a year, year and a half. And, so, you know, you have to look at doing things differently and they kind of absorbed that and said, well, we could possibly use this and we can't seem to fill it or we're having a difficulty, how else could we use it? So, yeah, that's something I think we just need to kind of have departments thinking about as people are, and, you know, we tend to kind of automatically backfill a role. It's, it becomes vacant, boom, we gotta fill it right away. Maybe we need to take a moment and think about, and that was even kind of what we did with the vacancy in the auditor's office with the accountant and I said, you know, I've always wanted to try to get a succession plan under a finance director here and those activities and operations kind of work closely. Could we maybe think about, instead of hiring, you know, having a, an assistant financier, could we kind of absorb that or try to utilize that and maximize it so that it's not when we have a vacancy in that role that it just gets dumped on the auditor's office, but we have an actual plan of succession and things like that, but it's hard to do, you know. We have a lot of still departments and elected officials, it's, we, we're centralized but decentralized and sometimes we need to kind of like look across the different departments and, and determine if it's, if there's anything we can do to change, so. But I think, you know, Brian's an example of going back to him and saying, maybe it's not the assistant county attorney, I mean, their workload is pretty high and that vacancy has allowed him to be very dynamic in attracting others, because we don't budget a vacancy at the full scale, but sometimes you have to be able to offer a higher wage when you have attorneys that are coming from other communities, smaller communities that have been an assistant accounting attorney or attorney for a long time, same with public health nurse. So we have that flexibility, but it's very competitive for nursing right now. We can't compete with the hospitals with hiring bonuses and tuition reimbursement at this time, but those are things to kind of think about. Those vacancies do allow that flexibility. The most vacancies we have are clearly in our jail and Michelle's absolutely right, the larger you have of a department, the more vacancies you, in turnover you have. But we'd want to, you know, kind of, I think, again, asking those departments or just in general, kind of taking a look at your roles and, and looking ahead as to whether these could be modified.
Do, if, if, if we go through that conversation, I'm not, certainly not opposed to it, does it, do we have the data, are we equipped, are we prepared to say that this position, yes, it's gonna, we can take this one off the rolls, but still have that adjustment?
Right.
Because there is turnover and so.
There is, but I think we'd have to, there will be a trade off. I think that portion we already have in there probably has to shrink some as we, if we're gonna, I'm not gonna say permanently, for the whole year, if we're gonna say right now we're not gonna fill something, we're gonna have to try to figure out how to balance those two things, because obviously those vacancies that have been in there and vacant for a year or two, we're, we're including that in that turnover already. So it could maybe go up some, but not by the full cost of the position that we're not filling.
Prior to doing that, that would have been, but since we took in that turnover factor, there, you know, it just, it's not really a one to one, you kind of have to.
Right, that just makes it a little more complicated to figure out. I, we, we just would have to make some assumptions. I mean, we, it was surprising to me when, when I actually looked at the actual savings and salaries for '23, it just happened to come out to $1,400,000. Complete coincidence, but it was pretty much right on the money with that, so.
But 24, halfway through, we're already at a million, right?
That does include employee benefits though, so right, salaries were maybe at seven? I have to go back and look, but, yeah. So this year, there are a few others. It's very hard to say what next year might be.
But our, so, then our adjustment is just on the, on that payroll adjustment, it's just salaries, it doesn't take into account.
I also this year tried to put, took the employee benefits out of the supplemental fund. I did not do that last year, but I, I am doing that for 2024, so if you look back at the sheets from Tuesday, in the general supplemental, you should see a $400,000 coming out of the fund balance column for that one.
And benefits are tough. We do, we, we, you know, budget for them and we budget at the 500 family plan.
Mostly, this year I tried to be a little more creative with that.
But historically, that's what we've done. And of course, people come in and, you know, it's been surprising that a lot of people, especially in the jail and, and new hires that are under 26, they don't take insurance. Now eventually they will, right? But, so we have been trying to kind of.
To reduce that, so this year, typically, I would want to at least budget half of the vacancies at family coverage and half at single. With the jail, I put them all at single because they're just, we're not getting new ones coming in that want family coverage and in fact, a lot are not taking any. So it, that, we are in a unique position, I think, with that. We aren't seeing very many other physicians that are coming in and not electing any insurance yet, there's maybe a few scattered around, but I'm, it's another, I'm kind of rolling the dice, so if people come in and do select. We aren't seeing very many other physicians that are coming in and not electing any insurance yet. There's maybe a few scattered around, but I'm, it's another, I'm kind of rolling the dice. So if people come in and do select family coverage, we may be dipping into a little bit of that general supplemental fund balance for those. But they're all guesses right now.
And this is, this was also an important factor, how in this negotiation, we were able to gain a lot of flexibility with our health insurance from the Public Safety Union. And that will be, as Michelle's demonstrating with the general supplemental, important, I think, in the years to come. You know, as to, not saying that we, like, we will always maintain affordable, I like to always maintain affordable insurance, but there are things we can do that people can select a higher deductible possibly, and that can help that to not have to dump into the general supplemental. But that's, that's yet to come. So this is what we have today, so.
And that will help overall taxes. It, it won't impact the problem we have today of the 1.6.
No, not for your, yeah. It'll just help the general supplemental.
Well, and, so that helps taxes, right? So that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I was, I was going to suggest that for next Tuesday, that maybe the board be ready to talk more in detail about the, the proposed FTEs and, and various capital projects.
And that would be good, I thought, for the staff to kind of get up and defend or make the case for their position, and then us have to ask the questions, the tough questions, I think that'd be great, too.
So do we just talk about FTEs and then Thursday tackle?
Yeah, we could, we could.
Capital?
Yeah, we could split that up. I think that.
Just trying to think through how we can make sure that the appropriate staff are here.
Yep.
Do we?
Well, we've got regular business Tuesday as well.
Yeah.
Rather than, I'm thinking of the suggestions you made, not that some of those don't work well for us, if we wanted to look at, too. Is that something we'd want to ask staff to at least consider for next week to?
I think.
Their thoughts, because really, their budgets, I think, they know their budgets better than any of us. If there were any changes that we wanted to propose.
Yeah, no, I, I think we want to communicate that with, with staff to come up, if they've got savings ideas that they'd like us to first look at within their budgets.
And would, would you like to ask each department to come up with a, like, a percentage of their budget? I think it generally works better to give them guidelines of what you're looking for. Doesn't mean that you adopt them all, it just makes people, okay, I need to find something.
Hate to make them too large.
No, I'm, I'm literally thinking.
Small.
Yeah, but I think 1% of.
Okay.
Tax askings, and, well, maybe that's too low, because that would assume you would take some of the suggestions on the first list, and if you don't want to do that.
Well, it doesn't mean no.
Then they're probably talking about a 3%.
That was.
And I'm just working.
I was thinking three.
Three for now, and then we can adjust on basis.
Doesn't mean that we're doing three, just gives us some room to make some decisions.
Right. Or clo, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else we want to cover for today? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
And so moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.